Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting to order for November 1st, 2022. My name is Carrie Martin. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relevant relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law on July 16th, 2022. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northbar Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. To confirm, board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by saying the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Amy Pareski?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep.
Okay.
And Millie Milton?
Here.
And Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Conners?
Here.
Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Great. Ground rules for the meeting. We don't have presenters and applicants on the agenda tonight, nor do we have public comment tonight, but if for whatever reason there's any comments, I want to make sure everybody knows how to do that. So by phone, you dial *9 to raise your hand in a way to be recognized by the Chair. Please note the party or phone number will be visible to those of you in the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen in a way to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for comments. Okay, with that, why don't we get started? With tonight's agenda. So first on the agenda, we have the Continued Public Hearing for 180 Barefoot Road Special Permit with Site Plan Review. As noted on the agenda, the applicant submitted written notice withdrawing this application. Lori, do we need to do anything specific for that? Vote on any sort of withdrawn without prejudice of sorts or anything?
Certainly you can if you'd like to vote. So if you recall, this application was more appropriately before the ZBA instead of the Planning Board. So they have not yet filed an application with the ZBA. Not quite sure what his plans are for the future. I think he's not sure at this time. So he has submitted a letter through his attorney withdrawing the application. So I do not anticipate that he will refile with the Planning Board. If anything, he will file with the ZBA.
Okay, so then would it be appropriate to vote on a withdrawal without prejudice then?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that there wouldn't be an instance of constructive approval by not by way of not closing the file. Does that make sense?
I already filed a copy of the letter with the town clerk, so it should be all set.
Okay. All right, for a safe measure, why don't we, if there's a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for 180 Barefoot Road Special Permit with Site Plan Approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Billy?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so 180 Barefoot Road is closed. Next, we have the Continued Public Hearing for 317 Crawford Street Site Plan Approval for a site disturbance of 42,500 square feet of land area. As noted on the agenda, there's a request for this to be continued. Is there a letter from the applicant on this one?
Yes, we received an email from Mark Arnold, so he's the representative from Goddard Consulting LLC. So his email says, please continue the site plan review for 317 Crawford Street to the December 6, 2022 hearing to allow a modified plan to be prepared by the project team. So we can accommodate him at 6:00 PM on December 6.
Okay. Any comments from the board on that? Okay, is there a motion to continue 317 Crawford Street Site Plan Approval to December 6 at 6:00 PM?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. 317 Crawford Street has been continued to December 6 at 6:00 PM. Okay, moving along to old new business, we have the Continued Discussion of Zoning Laws. I'm going to skip down the agenda, though, and just clear out the minutes as a quick item that will be quicker than the other two, if that's okay with the board.
Yep.
Okay, so Lori, you had sent out minutes for September 20th for everyone's review. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes for the 20th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and did this one was the one without amendment? There were amendments?
Yeah, there were pretty significant amendments that were sent out, so the entire introduction was added having to do with the executive session. So those track changes were sent out the day of our last Planning Board meeting.
Okay, great. Any comments or additional amended proposed amendments? Or any comments on the current proposed amendments? Okay, is there a motion then to accept the September 20th minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Was the second on that? Was that you, Millie?
I think it was. Sorry, Amy. I think I beat you.
Oh, that's okay.
You sounded the same for a second. Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. September 20th minutes approved as amended. October 4th, I know, I think there was two, and a notwithstanding question on the 4th. Let's see.
There was some confusion with these minutes. So the first question that you had sent, sent me, Carrie, on the revised meeting minutes was having to do with a comment that Fred had made. And of course, he's here now. He was out yesterday, so I didn't want to put words in his mouth, but it's on page two. It's the third paragraph down. Last sentence, Mitch, Mr. Litchfield recommended either denying site plan approval or continuing the public hearings so the applicant submit, can submit the plan at a later date. My interpretation of Fred's comment was he was recommending to deny site plan approval, but certainly Fred can speak to this better than I, so.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. I just couldn't remember if you suggested denying the waiver or the entire plan, so I just wanted to make sure to clarify that.
Well, there really wasn't a plan, so.
Here nor there. That, that works. Was there, then we delete, so then there was a deletion of a sentence, and then was there another tricky spot, Lori, or was that the only tricky?
There was, but the, the language is so convoluted. It had to do with the interpretation of something that Mr. Arnold had said. So because it was so up for interpretation and the meeting minutes are not a transcript of what is said, so I recommend just deleting the confusing part altogether.
Okay, on page six?
Page six, yes.
Okay.
Highlighted in blue.
Got it. Any other comments and thoughts on that from the board or additional amendments?
There's only one thing, and I don't know if it, there was one other, I just thought of it. There was one other neighbor that had called in and made comments, and those weren't included in the minutes. Do you think we need to add her comments? Remember, she called. She lived across the street.
Yeah, there, she was included here in the minutes.
Okay, I thought I only saw one comment from Laura Zaitin.
It's combined in the one paragraph, so 301 Crawford Street and 295 Crawford Street are just listed together in the same paragraph, I think, if you look on page five.
Yeah, there's Leslie Williams and then Sue Desmaris.
Okay, I don't know how I missed it.
295 Crawford and then 308 Crawford.
All right. Okay, oh, I missed it. Sorry. Monster.
Okay. Any other amendments to the minutes? All right, is there a motion then to accept the October 4th minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. Thanks for going through that. Let's pop back to the top of the list here. We have the Continued Discussion of Potential Zoning Bylaw Amendments for 2023. And Lori, you sent out some updated content for us.
Yes, so last time we discussed a couple of additional zoning changes that you wanted to add. So the, the new or the modified zoning amendments are reflected in red. So maybe we can just go in order. So it's on the document that says 110122 Draft. So the first one, which is actually the third article in the list, has to do with modifying the density and dimensional regulations. So there's a companion document associated with that article, which is the dimensional chart. And so this was talking about adding a lot coverage requirement. So kind of a standard lot coverage requirement, so if you recall, lot coverage involves all structures. So structures are considered swimming pools, so whether they're above ground or in ground, sheds of 120 square feet or more, and of course, the foundation of homes. So it, it does not include paved areas. So if you have a patio, it wouldn't be included within lot coverage. So that would be called an impervious lot coverage requirement, so that would cover pavement as well. So in the larger zoning districts where the minimum lot size is one acre or more, my recommendation is to have a lot coverage 25%. That should be ample. And then in the smaller, a smaller district, so the residential C district where the lot size is 20,000 square feet, I recommended 30% lot coverage. That's pretty standard. So if you were to have, say, accessory structures like garages, that would also be encompassed in this lot coverage requirement.
Okay. Question for you about the footnotes. So are there, is there a separate section that covers your family dwellings for a different set of law regulations that we need to also amend or no?
So the, the, so this would apply to whether you're doing a duplex, you're doing a multifamily, or whether you're doing a single-family home. So if you look at the dimensional requirements for two-family, they reference back to the original dimensional chart. And it's just, let me get there. Wait with me a moment. So they, they specify increase in minimum lot area frontage and width. The side yard is 20 feet, so that's a slight increase. And then as far as everything else is concerned, that's not included in the table, it would refer back to the original dimensional table. So the lot coverage would apply regardless of whether it's a single-family or two-family. It would apply to all of the uses.
Great. Okay, any thoughts or questions on this one?
I actually had a question. Do some towns ever use the impervious lot coverage? When I first started on the Planning Board, I remember feeling confused by I, there were some business zones and the building, it said like lot coverage 50%, yet the building was huge and like the rest of the lot is pavement and driveways. So it was like almost 100% coverage, even though it said it met the lot coverage of 50%. Like.
Yeah, usually they have an open space requirement in business or industrial districts where there is a risk that any area that is not covered by building is going to be covered by parking. Not typically an issue in residential districts because generally people would prefer landscaping. They don't want to have like a sea of parking around their homes. So certainly, we do have, if you see the minimum open space, yeah, has pretty much the, the reverse of the impervious lot coverage requirement. So in some communities do an impervious lot coverage requirement, so it would be a much higher number. So it might be, say, 90% can be covered by either buildings or parking. So this is the reverse of that. So it ends up being a lower number. So what it says is that, like in your downtown district where the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, 20% of the 10,000 square feet has to be open space.
Okay, well, downtown neighborhood, downtown business is 15 in my book.
Yep, I got, I'm sorry, DN, what is that?
Downtown Neighborhood.
Yeah. I'm still, I'm still getting down the, the abbreviations.
It's amazing how small 15% is. 15% is usually like a five-foot like square around the whole building.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, so sometimes it just, it feels like a sea of pavement.
But then in a downtown area, you, well, especially if you're trying to get the traditional look of a downtown, then the buildings take up the vast majority of the lot. So you want to have your building right on your sidewalk. And so the, if you have a sprawl corridor, then you tend to have the buildings further bar back from the sidewalk. And then you have typically the parking in between the building and the sidewalk. But that's not typically what you want to see in your downtown.
No. Actually, I was thinking, it was an industrial once. It was like in addition to an industrial building. I can't remember the lot. Might have been the cardboard company that expanded. And when you looked at the plan, it was just like everything was covered except for like one little strip of grass. But that's neither here nor there. I was just, I was just interested when you said the impervious lot coverage. I hadn't heard that before. But but thank you.
Okay, any other comments on that one? Okay, do you want to go down to the next one? Off-street parking?
Sure. So the next one I have in red has to do with off-street parking, and I did receive an email from Amy on that one. So that was what we were talking about. It came out of the Design Review Committee when we were trying to come up with the duplex guidelines. And one of the issues that really became apparent is the problem with driveways being right on the property line. So this aimed at requiring a five-foot setback from the side lot line for driveways. And maybe you want, you want to speak to your modification, Amy?
Okay, sorry if it goes in and out. My video is kind of weird today. I know the answer to it, but it's in the basement, so I can't fix it now, but, um, so it was no driveway shall be maintained within five feet of a side lot line. And my question to Lori in the email was, I was wondering if we should take out maintained and just say no driveway shall be within five feet of a side lot line, because when I heard the word maintain, I think of like snow plowing and shoveling. No driveway shall be maintained within five feet of the lot line, like.
I'm fine with that change.
So, yeah, it was just taking out, and I think I added something too. I said no driveway or parking shall be within five feet of a side lot line, because someone could just build a big parking lot at the bottom and what do you think about the parking? Does it matter?
I'm fine. The one thing that I didn't have time to check on today is to go into our rules and regs to see if there's already a requirement that says that it has to, there may be a requirement in, in there that says there can't be any parking within the side lot line. So I just want to verify that before I say definitely I'm okay with this change.
Okay.
Because we don't want to, well, maybe we do. Maybe we want to choose one direction or the other, but certainly we don't want to have contradictory information in one zoning bylaw and in the rules and regs.
Yep.
And so the line item C is new, so at some point we'll, we'll just underline it as a new text.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And are you talking about this is throughout the entire town, or is this a certain area within town? Because I would envision if you have you know, a thriving downtown area that you're going to get some of these side driveways.
So this would apply townwide. So anybody who had to go through site plan review would, so anything that currently exists would be considered grandfathered. But any new developments would have this requirement that your driveway couldn't be directly on your lot line.
And the reason why it came up, it was when we were looking at the duplex on Hudson Street, and the driveways were right up against the lot line, which made it so like it was steep in the back or something. There's no place to plow it. The snow, unless you pushed it on your neighbor's yard. So we were talking about a five feet, and then if you had two duplexes side by side, the driveways, or no, I think it was on the left side, the driveway would be up against the driveway of the other house. So both driveways were on the lot line, and it would just be like one big sea of pavement. If the driveways are all going up the lot line and they're connected to each other. And there was a big discussion on, you know, someone said, well, we could put a fence up. And then, you know, Dave Varon, who does plowing, is like, well, where do you push the snow? And I think Lori, you had mentioned that, and Lori and Dario both mentioned that in all the other towns they've worked with, there was always a five-foot or more setback for driveways on lots.
So the town that I came from, we had a 10-foot side setback requirement, but it was only within the limits of the front yard setback. So what it said is that within the front yard, you shall have no driveway closer than 10 feet of the, of the side lot line. So once you got beyond the front setback, so that was 25 feet, then you can go right, right, pretty much to the property line, but not within that 25-foot front setback. So that worked really well for us. You know, there were, there were some folks that weren't too excited because they had a particularly tight property, but they were always able to make it work. And there were some that made that swing, you know, the way past the 25 feet, and then it's in order to make it into the side garage. So sometimes that can be a cha-challenge getting into the side entrance garage. So you need the angle in order to, to make the appropriate approach. So that's another possibility is we could just limit within the front yard setback.
Yeah.
If there's a concern about those side, side entry garages.
Well, I guess I was just thinking more in the downtown area. If you want to have a more uniform look to your downtown area, a lot of times there's not the luxury of having, let's say, 10 feet between parking lot drive areas, access areas.
Honestly, in the downtown area, what I would like to see is municipal parking and the ability to actually not have any off-street parking. So some properties, if they're within walking distance of a municipal parking lot, the parking requirement would be waived altogether.
I don't disagree with you on that.
Yeah, I think that's one of the, the big weaknesses to the downtown is all of the driveways and the, the need for everybody to have their own parking. Even, you know, combined parking. So say you have two properties that are next to each other, then they could have a single entrance and they could share a parking lot. So that, that's another possibility that would improve the appearance of the downtown, I think.
Well, but really quick to Millie's point, if we put this into the downtown, you wouldn't be able to do that because you're within five feet of the, the side lot line.
Well, what I would like is when we do a revision, so right now we're working with Weston and Sampson on the visioning. So we'll see how that goes. But if folks decide that they really want a traditional kind of pedestrian-friendly, more compact downtown, then we could include special exclusions for the downtown district. So within the zoning itself, off-street parking, we could put like a paragraph in there that says, this doesn't apply to the downtown district. In fact, if you're within 500 feet of a municipal parking lot, or, you know, God willing, some, sometime we get on-street parking in our downtown. So if on-street parking is allowed, then you don't have to do parking at all. So there will be no need for a driveway. And if they decide that they want to do a driveway, then they can go ahead and conform to the five-foot requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking also something like, you know, CBS where they have their drive-through.
Yeah, this wouldn't apply. It, it would not preclude a drive-through. Like CBS, if you can think about it, their drive-through is not right on the property line. There's a little bit of a buffer around. Landscape buffer.
And would there be provisions made for fire truck access and emergency service vehicles? Or would they be on-street if there's no driveway?
So generally, the way it works in a traditional downtown So generally, the way it works in a traditional downtown, if the fire truck has to service a um, a commercial building that doesn't have any off-street parking, then they just park in front. And they just make it work. A lot of times there are alleys, alleys in the back, sometimes in between buildings. And they're able to get access that way. Uh, but in a traditional downtown, you do not generally have the luxury of having fire truck access around all four sides of the building, because there are buildings in the way. So, so the buildings hug each other. But maybe food for thought, you know, this is just the, the first introduction. Um, so folks can think about it and then we can revisit it in the future and see if this is something you like. Or whether um, maybe we should modify it and make it a little bit um, more flexible.
Hmm.
So the next one having to do with signs, I just took the two definitions that you had proposed last year and I put them in, in this article. So uh, there's exact same definitions that you folks uh, mulled over last year.
And then do they have to go, if they're defined, do they go on the use table or not necessarily?
So what they would do is uh, they would go under the definitions area. So if you look in the So they have a whole bunch of definitions included in the sign bylaws, so they'd just be added there.
No, I know, but if something's defined, does it then need to have a home? Like, can you just have a definition that doesn't really have a, a spot?
You mean that it's not uh, designated as a, a use in a particular zone? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like usually if we have a definition, you find it in the table of uses. We have the corresponding uses are listed. But for this, they're just kind of orphan definitions.
Yeah, I didn't really know how you wanted to tackle that, because last year it wasn't approved. So.
Yeah. So, so the point, what would the point be of the definitions in general? Take the first step or?
I think that's what we talked, discussed the last meeting, is that you wanted to make a first step and with the hopes of going back the next year and designating a specific location.
Okay. Any comments or thoughts on that one?
Ready? I think it's pretty straightforward.
So then the next one is just revisiting the White Cliffs Mansion rezoning. Um, I had forgotten, there's a, another parcel that is part of the White Cliffs um, property. And so I wanted to make sure to add that. It's about three-quarters of an acre. And I sent you folks the, the little drawing uh, that included that parcel, so.
I just had a quick question about White Cliffs.
Yeah.
If this is rezoned all to business, um, is there anything in the RFP about if it burns down, it has to be built up the same? I'm just wondering if it's rezoned business and someone buys it for $10 and all of a sudden there's an accidental fire. Then can they build whatever they want there?
Um, well, there would be a preservation restriction that goes with the sale.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what the um, language and the preservation restriction will be, because that hasn't been worked out yet. So the idea would be to figure out a use and then kind of design the preservation restriction around the use such that it's not so restrictive that it won't make it financially viable to have that use. Um, so on December 8th, I believe it is, that's the deadline for the um, proposals. So within a lot, we'll receive a few proposals. And then the White Cliffs Committee will uh, review the proposals and uh, select their, their best option and then we'll go forward with that. So right now, um, it, people were very intrigued. We had our tour today uh, with folks who are interested in uh, possibly bidding on the property. And um, there were a number of folks who were very intrigued by the zoning. And uh, they had questions about the, the uses that would be allowed. Under the current zoning, it's pretty much a single-family district, so it's extremely limiting as to what you can do with it. Um, so we thought that rezoning would provide uh, the, the flexibility to ensure that this property is actually occupied at some point and renovated and saved.
I can definitely see that. I just know like our old town hall don't burnt down, but the owner had to rebuild a replica. So I didn't know if the same thing would be for White Cliffs, just in case.
Yeah, I, I can't really speak to that, because like I, like I said, I'm not sure what the preservation restriction will say. But the goal is certainly to preserve the historic building. Um, so if it's a new building that looks like old, then it's not entitled to any sort of preservation status. It's not, it's not a historic building. It's just a new building that looks old.
Right.
It's, it's not, it's not going to be the special building that currently exists.
Right.
I'm guessing they could put something in that similar to what they did with Four West Main that you know, would be that type of language, but maybe not.
It might, it might not be financially feasible to rebuild building the way it currently is. Um, you know, one of the things that the preservation architect had pointed out to us is every single room is in a different type of wood and the carvings uh, in the woodwork um, tell you what type of wood it was used in that uh, particular room. Like in the sycamore room, there's sycamore leaves and berries and so that's one way you can tell that that is the wood that the uh, room was planted, so. I, I, I just can't see that it would be affordable in this day and age. They don't make things like they used to. Um, and of course, the fireplace screens and there's marble and uh, you know, the tile that came from Europe and uh, you know, Asia, they probably wouldn't be able to replicate that today.
I wonder if they could put in a clause clause like, should it burn down? You know, like because the town paid $2 million for it. But should it burn down and say this person buys it for $10 dollars, then the land comes back to the town, because it'd be it would just be like, I'm giving it away. If they give it away to someone, all of a sudden then there's a fire and the person gets the, develop like a whole big new commercial building, doing something totally different. And I know this is a talk for White Cliffs, not today, but that was my only concern, moving it to commercial and then someone saying, oh, okay, I'm gonna get, get this at a cheap price and all of a sudden it burns down.
I think it's a concern.
Not like it hasn't happened before in town.
I, I agree.
But my concern though is under the current zoning, nobody will be interested in it. The, the town won't want to invest money into rehabbing it. And then it'll just eventually fall apart and be demolished due to uh, negligence, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think that the rezoning is really important.
We'll know before town meeting to what people are bidding on it, so.
Right.
So if it comes in, someone wants to do hosing, then we don't switch it. Which you probably can't do anyways.
Yeah, even under the residential C zoning district, you can't do multi-family, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if anything, it would have to be a 40B if they want to do multi-family. Or we'd have to consider an alternative zoning. You know, we could also do like a White Cliffs overlay district
Mm-hmm.
um, to allow whatever, whatever the number one proposal is. I, I think the important thing is to be flexible uh, to allow something special to happen here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so is there do we, or do you want to leave this as is for now and think about it additionally, or are there any proposals of what we could add here or no proposals as of now?
I think it's fine as of now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I think it's okay.
Okay. All right, and that, I think that was the last of the bunch for the new ones. Is that it Lori? That's the last of the bunch?
That's it.
Okay, so.
Have something to add, if I can have that, a chance. I was supposed to do um, a chart for the signs. And um, it was very difficult. Because our sign by law, the way it's worded, most towns have like, say, went to Southborough and they have a sign that's, they allow 25 square feet. But in Northborough, we allow 25 square feet plus extra for changeable, plus 15% for the address. And then it adds, adds if we have one tenant or if we have two to three tenants, it was really hard to put in a table. So now I can see why they didn't do it before. I actually think um, we should look at the numbers and maybe have it be one number. So like, say, Southborough, oh, they have 25 square feet for a wall sign. And that includes everything that I just talked about. So if you have one sign, you, you do with it what you want, but we add in so many extras for this and extras for that. And um, we also have two different heights listed. Like when I looked at Southborough, there's one height, 12 feet. We have 10 feet to like the top of the sign and then 12 feet to the top of the structure. It's very convoluted. So actually what I was gonna propose is maybe the signs go to design review and we could talk through it like we did with the two-family guidelines. And we could come back to you or come back to at least the master plan committee, also the consultants with some new numbers. It just was very confusing. I couldn't put it in a table, because my table was huge to add in all the little extras that we had. It wasn't that any easier to read than the wording.
Hmm.
But we have um, listed one to two ten tenants and then three and above, where Southborough has, you get one wall sign per tenant, not one wall sign for one or two tenants and then two and three above get two signs. It's just very confusing. But I wanted to um, yeah, ask if I could bring it to design review and we'll go over it and we can talk it over and even run it by the consultants. Because the consultants are gonna want some sort of idea of how big of signs we want and height.
So there are two different bylaws for the, there's the wall sign piece of it, but then also the chart piece of it. So you're thinking both together, Amy, and bringing it there? Or you're talking about just a law line?
Yeah, I think, yeah, no, for all of it. I think to do the chart, we have to talk about the, the numbers. And we didn't talk about the numbers last year. But we also talked about it last meeting where we might include a percentage. Because 32 square feet might be huge on a small building, but too small on a big building like Wegmans.
Mm-hmm.
And we can discuss it as a planning board, if you'd rather go through the activity as a planning board. But I know the design review is done with the two-family guidelines, so I thought we could just just discuss it there.
I mean, I have no preference. Board members, preferences, thoughts?
I just, I have a, a bit of a concern, only because the last two years, we've, you know, the planning board has tried to bring up sign changes, right? And when you bring up too many changes, people get confused and they don't, you know, and then you lose out on the whole thing. So that was why I originally suggested just making those two, you know, definition changes, make small changes. If we bring this to design review, I think that's fine, but I think we still need to implement it over multiple years just so people can understand what it is, you know, we're trying to implement. Instead of, you know, doing this whole big ordeal and shoving it into one time meeting and expecting it to get passed, because then what happens is one little thing gets, gets taken, you know, wants to be taken out and the whole thing fails.
So is it possible to just have like the percentage, the wall sign as a percentage of the building? Is that just a small enough component that?
That's all I was gonna look at with design review was the numbers, the size. We have like, our downtown has 32 square feet for a wall sign. Plus 25 if you want to add changeable wording, plus 15% for your this number. Or, and it, it comes up to like 82 square feet sign, and that's a huge sign for downtown. Those are just little ideas I just wanted to discuss and probably, probably bring it in front of the master plan consultants. But I wasn't, like last year, we definitely, I went through everything. Definitely agree with Bill, like, but I definitely wanted while we had the consultants here to talk about the signs, because they'll be gone after after, I don't know Lori, are they gone in March? And I know signs is something we kept saying we're gonna talk about with the master plan consultants.
You know, that, the way that I wrote the RFP was though, that they were gonna make recommendations like kind of broad recommendations, so they weren't gonna like tell us how to redo our sign bylaw. So that would be an extra cost that wasn't included within the um, within the RFP.
Okay.
So they, they make more generic, generic um, recommendations having to do with the overall vision of the downtown.
Okay. Okay.
So there's a problem that right now we're not talking percentages and we want to switch it to percentages. So right now we talk, we give them square feet. Is that what we have in here?
We do. The way Southborough has it, it's 25 square feet or 10% of the wall size, whichever is smaller. I just think if you add up all of ours, it's pretty big, the number or compared to all other towns. And I guess that's something for the consultants. Do people still use the changeable signs in the downtown?
Yes, I, I've seen a, a number of uh, changeable message signs in downtown. So that's, that's pretty typical. So I wouldn't want to get rid of that. That's actually, you know, a benefit to the shop owners. Like even like little pizza shops will uh, put those uh, changeable message signs in their windows. Um, so.
Okay.
I guess I kinda am leaning towards um, leaving downtown alone until we have a vision. Like I wouldn't want to go in the wrong direction and then have to correct it next year.
Okay.
And we're still at the very, very beginning of this visioning process. Uh, so we're not gonna get a report probably until around April.
And then I probably won't do a chart for the signs. I can share what it looked like. It got so long. It was like a page long because. We have so many. Little additions.
Right.
It was hard to put it all in a chart. I can share. You want me to share my screen for a second?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I'm I'm not disputing it.
Right.
Trying to think if there's another way to look at how to compile the chart elements.
Can you see my screen?
Parts of it.
Alright, let me. Let me see what I can do here. So like if you go to downtown business, this is how Southport did it. They had max area, max height, max. Number. So if we go to our downtown business, we have one to two tenants, then we have three plus tenants. Free standing wall, but we have. Thirty-two square feet and it was plus twenty-five square feet changeable. And then plus fifteen percent for the. Address where. I can show you what Southborough's chart looked like.
Holy cow.
Yeah, and mine was going. Way down below page. They have the height. The area and the number allowed. But our. Our num- our maximum area had three different parts to it.
Right. Based on. Percentage, yeah.
And so at the end of South, at the end of Southborough, they write. The max size. Or ten percent of the total area of the facade of the business establishment, whichever is left. But it is very simple and this is what I wanted to do. I do think we could take out the one to two tenants and the three plus tenants. The way they got around it, they just wrote one per tenant.
Sure. Well, then there's two, then there's two things here. One is either just creating a chart that reflects what the words say. But then there's creating a whole new chart, like all new stuff in the chart. Were you just recording what's already in there in this chart or you were making changes to like what?
No, I was trying to. Record what was already in there. So confusing. I'm like, I think we actually need to change our numbers to be able to make a chart. Like, I think our town should have like what they do. The maximum size is twenty-five square feet. And you can use that to do whatever you want. You can add in your address. You can add in your changeable. Where we say it's thirty-two square feet plus an extra twenty-five if you want changeable plus fifteen percent for an address. And then for our height, instead of saying twelve feet high, we have ten feet. To the highest point or twelve foot to the top of the sign structure. I don't know why. We just don't have a map.
I think part of it though depends on the size of the building. So there is a percentage element that is. I think aesthetically pleasing. If you limit it to what Southborough says, you say six square feet on a huge building. That's gonna look awkward. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
I mean, it seems exceptionally small. On a big building, so.
Think they get bigger when you get into the highway district. Seventy-five square feet.
Yeah.
It depended on which district.
On the zone, yeah.
That seems to be the way most towns are, it's per zone and it gets bigger as you get to highway and industrial. That's even how we have it now.
Right.
Can you scroll back up?
Sure. To Southborough or not?
You're right here.
That's residential, okay. Well, that makes more sense.
Yep, and our residential is actually two square feet. Or six.
Yeah.
For the temporary.
This also has research, scientific, professional district, which. Different than ours, but.
I do like, I think Southborough, I think it's a bit cleaner than what we've got going on. I do like that approach. I think Bill's got some great points about doing this incrementally, so it's not too much at one time, so people can digest it. But then I also think what Lori said about waiting for the vision. Done, that makes sense too.
Yep. I just think to do a chart, we're gonna have to clean up some things. But we don't have to do a chart this year.
Right, and and it might be easier as we get further down the process with the master plan. Committee.
I agree with that too.
Yep.
There's plenty of room on the fence here.
So we can wait till next year for it.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not going to even change anything like the wall signs as a percentage of the building, so. No chart, no wall sign percentage.
No, I think we have to wait.
Okay. But Amy, thank you for doing all this work. I know it's a lot to get through, untangle it all. So save it.
I just started, but then I think the chart was gonna be just as long as the wording by the time I was done, or at least close.
Yeah, I'm crossing that off the list. Um, okay, a couple of other things that we had um, from before, just to check where we are on it. Um, so there are a couple of little ones, or maybe not little. We had. The common driveway, there's a bad reference to nineteen sixty-seven.
Yep, so uh, next we're gonna, after we finish this conversation, we're gonna go to the Northborough Planning Board Rules and Regs. And we are proposing some changes to the common driveway uh, regulations in there. And then having to do with the design standards for common driveway. That's the subdivision rules and regs, so we'll be tackling those later. Uh, so we're not at that point yet.
Okay, no problem. So I just wanna make sure as we go through this, um, we, what do we wanna do about, there was a residential and industrial combo. Lori, that was you. You had that one.
Um, yeah. So is that something that you wanna tackle where you're eliminating the um. Ability to have essentially a mill owner on the same property as an in- industrial. Uh, building. Um, so that applied with the contractor's yard. So you had a single family home on the property. And then they were proposing a contractor's yard, so you have the combo.
Yeah.
So generally, you know, I personally don't like to see residential and industrial uses on the same parcel because. I believe them to be inherently incompatible. Um, and kinda asking for trouble, but how how do you folks feel about that? Is that something you wanna tackle or no?
If it's easy enough, I like it. Any other thoughts on?
I like it too.
Yeah.
Okay. I will draw that up and present it at the next meeting.
We had the multifamily overlay.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna be ready for that this year. Um, so I've kinda needled C M R P C. Um, but since we haven't started working on that yet. I'm thinking that um, we're we're not gonna be ready for public hearing in January. So we can continue to work on it. Um, but I I think we'll probably. Be more ready next year. So I don't wanna rush it just for rushing its sake. Uh, cuz we have until December uh, thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, do we wanna use our L P hour, L P A hours in any meaningful way at this point or?
Well, we have technical assistance uh, through the um. Through the state. For the. Uh, multifamily bylaw. So, but you know, we might need some extra. We might be interested in some extras, so. Unless you have another idea how you wanna use it.
That's what I'm wondering. No, I didn't. Does the board have any? So we have our L P A hours that we, I don't know, sometimes it's gone to open space in the past if we didn't use them or. Is there, if we don't use them, is there a way the town can use them or? So you can think about it if you want. I just wanna mention it because it's too bad to go to waste.
In June.
Perhaps, I'll have to double check the message.
Someone from C M R P C emailed me about the Mass Trails Grant. And for the multi-use trail, like if we decide to go for a Mass Trails Grant, she said she could help write it. I don't know if that would be L P A hours or not. Or if we need her.
Alrighty, let's see. Oh no, this is last year's L P A.
Amy, I did look at the Mass Trails Grant. And I don't think we'll be able to apply this year unless you're gonna apply for design because the questions that they ask. You pretty much have to be pretty far along with your design in order to be able to answer the questions, so. It's a, it's kinda a complicated application.
Yeah. I don't know, I think Ashley's done one before and she said she could do it, but. Like you said, I don't think we'll be ready this year if we're just going for a feasibility study. I don't know if any of the other trails people. Need anything.
Let's see, oh, we have, so we have a balance of seventeen hours. I don't know what good means. So I guess we have a balance of seventeen hours and. I guess we'd be requesting it now. Up to twelve hours can be requested for June projects with a start date after July one. So. We have to submit no later than March thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay, so we just gotta think about that.
Sure, we can think of something between now and then.
So if L P A hours aren't drawn down by June first, the L P A, the L P A hours may be allocated to other projects in town that may be in progress. And those projects will be discounted or credited accordingly. So I think that's what we've. Done in the past, like if we were working with C M R P C on an open space project and we had credit for hours, we would just allocate the hours. So maybe think about it or this board thinks about it. If there's anything we have or or Lori, you have on your radar that would be of interest. I don't think any. Bylaws necessarily. At this point, then we need help with, and you're right, we do have the technical assistance hours for the multifamily.
I don't know if the um, the traffic and safety committee. Might use that as well.
That could be great cuz they did our audit.
Yeah, and they did the walkthrough on Bartlett on in October. Last October.
Okay, so that may be something. Alright, not to distract, but something to think about. Alright, so multifamily overlay is next year?
That is actually, I'm sorry, if I could just uh, follow up on that. One of the things we were talking about with Weston and Sanson is uh, possibly doing a traffic study along Route twenty. Uh, because they thought that um. Mass D O T would be interested in knowing what the um, traffic counts are now. Um, if we are going to have a conversation with them about making some changes on Route twenty to make it more pedestrian friendly. Uh, so possibly the on-street parking or, you know, maybe doing some road narrowing or intersection narrowing. Um, so that's another idea. Cuz I know C M R P C does traffic counts. So maybe we can use some L P A hours uh, to offset that cost of the traffic counts.
I think that's certainly worthy. Okay, so those are great ideas. We also had the mini- minimum area requirement for groundwater. Is that you Fred that you have cooking?
Yeah, Fred and I have to work on that. It's uh, it's a complicated bylaw, so. We just have to get ourselves in a room and thrash it out. Uh, for some period of time before Fred leaves on vacation.
That's next week.
Okay, we had, we covered tonight the lock coverage requirements. We covered the impervious surface buffer. Um, let's see, what else? It looks like the stormwater language is a rules and reg. Is that right?
Yeah, we got that tonight.
There were definitions for light industrial. I was supposed to take a second look at that, so I um, I need to do my homework on that one.
I am a little bit concerned about that one because it failed at town meeting last year, so. We can't uh, go forward with it in the same way cuz there's the two-year uh, kinda.
But I think last year we only went after warehouse and I think I was looking at light industrial.
Oh, okay.
That was one of our catch-all. Sometimes it just catches all uses and they just kinda seem funky, funky uses fall into that bucket. So I was just taking a second look at the light industrial one. I'm pretty sure we didn't do that one last year. It was warehouses only. Right? Okay, um, do you still have a concern with that Lori, or does that? Believe what you were originally concerned about?
I'm a little bit concerned because of course we already have a whole host of uses that are already under that definition. So I always have concerns about. Uh, you know, outlawing uses that currently exist in in a district. With the definition.
Okay, so changing the definition means still staying within parameters that makes everything else still work okay. But not allowing things that shouldn't belong in there. Some somehow making that. Satisfying both sides of that equation.
Or possibly uh, like we talked about before, maybe creating a heavy industrial zone versus a light industrial zone, so you're still allowing these uses. Um, but maybe in areas where currently. The heavy industrial uses don't exist and they're not within close proximity to residential uses.
So I guess the problem is trying to solve is that heavy uses are getting into the light industrial classification, so. What I wanna, what I'm trying to solve for is making sure that if it is truly light industrial, great, you belong there, but if you're truly not light industrial and you're just getting. Stuffed into that definition because you don't fit anywhere else. Is there a better spot for that? So. Is it adding heavy industrial instead of tinkering with light industrial?
Let's uh, let's set that aside for now. Let me, let me ponder that. Uh, and we can talk about it at a future, future time, if you don't mind. I just don't wanna, you know, uh, kinda send you in the wrong direction.
Okay, that's fair. Any other comments on that one? Uh, let's see, I'm just going through here. We covered, we, before we had a bunch that we looked at. Um, we updated White Cliffs. Um, we have the, now we have the, so the issue and Fred, you're here this time. So last time we tried to have a conversation about this, but wanted to hear more for you, from you. So we talked about the um, groundwater advisory committee and trying to figure out, um, what is the future role of groundwater advisory committee? And the last time we met, the board talked about um. Possibly, do we look at either the composition of the committee, the jurisdiction of the committee? And outside of that, we wanted to hear from you what the value of the committee is to you, so. And outside of that, we wanted to hear from you what the value of the committee is to you. So how that helps you in, in what you do. I guess maybe starting with the last part first would be good.
Well, the, the committee, um, is made up of, as you know, of one member from five different boards and committees and bring to it the perspective that they have for each of those boards. I think the original intent was that they would, they would be able to do that, not so much provide technical expertise, but provide the background that they have attained as being on those boards and committees. And I feel it's useful. Um, and it takes several years of being on the committee in order to really get a feel for all the different things to watch out for. So it's not, um, I think it's a good idea to have the committee. I think that the, the way it's made up right now actually works well. Um, I really wouldn't, I really wouldn't change the makeup of the committee.
Do you look to them for any sort of advisement, or are they bringing expertise that is helpful to you or valuable in that way, or?
Um, they, they do. Uh, they don't have specific requirements. It could be anybody on each of those boards. Uh, but they have the history of working with those, those boards and the aspects that they are looking to that I don't deal with, uh, I don't deal with the Conservation Commission anymore as, uh, but in the past I did. I don't work with the Board of Health, so the person from the Board of Health and the Selectman has a more of a business uh, mind that they bring to it. Um, Conservation Commission has their own areas. Water and Sewer has their own criteria that they look at on the various projects that come before them. So it is valuable beyond what I do is review the drainage calculations and try to make sure that we have the, the proper safeguards. They're really kind of a worst-case scenario committee, and the more heads, the better on determining what's the worst thing that could happen if the business were to go in there and have a failure and what can we do to prevent that.
Mm-hmm. So what the board talked about last time was, um, for other advisory committees, like when we have a design review committee, we pick certain roles that bring expertise in the area. So, um, like you talked about different, you know, business mind or this experience. But in a groundwater bylaw, is there an instance where you could see like specific expertise would be valuable for a groundwater bylaw? Like, is it maybe considered as a case for conservation? But what other cases do you, is there anything that would be more helpful on that board, like?
Um, I have to, I have to admit, I, I was starting to do some research when Lori had mentioned that this came up at the last meeting about the bylaw when it was created. And I was able to find a, a file that goes back to nineteen eighty-three when they started talking about it. And the bylaw didn't actually get adopted until nineteen eighty-six. And there were a lot of things going on at the state level at the time. And there was, I believe there were some grants available for the creation of the groundwater, the aquifer protection overlay district, which is what a lot of towns call it. And many towns in the state developed them in the mid-eighties when the state was, was doing this, helping with this research and providing some grants. So I'm not sure if the makeup of the committee was a result of that or not. Um, and it may be something that, uh, I may need to check with town council to find out if we can even alter that without affecting the way the bylaw was adopted through the state requirements in the very beginning.
But no other towns really have this bylaw, so I can't imagine that we're, do other towns have this committee around us?
Um, not necessarily a committee, but, um, they do have aquifer protection overlay districts in their zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I think just getting back to when you think about design review, there are certain roles. So there's somebody who's an architect or a landscape designer, or there are specific things that help inform the board, the planning board in making a decision. But on the groundwater committee, it didn't seem as clear-cut that there is like, okay, these are the expertise that are lending itself. It seemed to the board, or feel free to speak up, everybody, I don't want to speak for you, but mostly it was you doing the bulk of the work. It's your letter, you're the engineer, you're pretty much our expert. And did we really need, were there any additional expertise coming to the table that somebody has said to you, oh Fred, you're actually incorrect on that. It's this, you know?
Um, I, I've been wrong on occasion. Not often I like to think, but I am wrong and, and I'm always open to input from the, all the boards and committees. Um, it's, it's my job as a liaison to flush out what the bylaw requires and what the applicant's proposing and presented to them to see if it makes sense or not. And to make sure we looked at all the scenarios that could possibly be prevented, uh, when somebody's looking for a special permit. So it's, um, I like the committee the way they are. I think that they are a valuable asset. I don't think that it's, um, again, the more heads, the better when it comes to envisioning what could happen. Um, it's easy enough to review what gets submitted, but thinking about those things, there are things like safety protocols that, uh, different businesses have, a training of their employees and deliveries and, and what happens, you know, where the wetlands are in relation to the site. Um, not all projects that are in groundwater are in a resource area that is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I don't think it's, I don't think it's the same, although they're both advisory committees, I don't think it's the same uh, comparison to the design review committee because you are looking for architectural features. You are looking for things like that where we don't have an architect on staff. I think that having those members of the design review committee with that background is a help. I don't think it's necessary with the groundwater advisory committee because you do have an engineer on staff. And so, um, their backgrounds in border health, conservation, water and sewer, and, um, planning and, and the board of selectmen give it a big, a wide range of things that could come up.
Okay, any thought, any other thoughts on that or comments from anyone?
I mean, have you ever had times when, when board members or committee members have uh, completely disagreed with, uh, your, your evaluation or assessment? I feel like, you know, reading a stormwater report is probably not something that they would really digest or comprehend, which is ninety percent of what's the basis of, of the groundwater direction.
Well, the, the stormwater report, um, isn't really ninety percent of the, of the applicant's requirement to submit. It's the, it's the only committee that gets to look at what goes on inside the building technically. Um, all the other, uh, applications are for things going on outside the billing, building setbacks, grading, drainage, things like that outside. But this committee gets to look at what goes on inside the building as part of that special permit. And the, the way the, what the business does, what they store inside the building, those are the kinds of things that they get to weigh in on and, and do. And, um, some have, uh, questioned things about the stormwater. We did have, we do have one person on the committee who was, uh, instrumental in the stormwater program at the DEP. Uh, we do have the conservation, uh, member who was familiar with stormwater reports and wetlands and waterways and other things. And then the Board of Health, um, representative weighs in on things that pertain to septic loading and area requirements, which we have for the special permit for multi-hit, multifamily housing in a groundwater overlay. And that is the, above and beyond what the Board of Health, um, has for their regulations because it's an overlay district.
Okay.
It's more than just stormwater.
No, thank you.
Not that that's not important.
No, it's a big part though, yeah.
Um, okay, so for the members, I've never sat on groundwater, so I guess, um, Amy or Anthony, the, just as part, being a part of that board. Are there, there are conversations happening there? Are they using, are helpful in producing better recommendations for the planning board? Or what is your perspective as members of this committee?
Um, yeah, I don't know. I think the review is thoughtful enough and it doesn't hurt to have, you know, the extra set of eyes and, you know, talents on this. Um, I would say that everybody really kind of goes to the direction of the calculations that Fred puts together. And for me, in, in general, you know, after seeing an application, um, you know, I still rely heavily on what Fred advises. And if the calculations make sense, then that's kind of as far as I think most people take it. I think, you know, I think the discussion kind of came from when we were having somewhat of an issue with the decisions and how they were presented and recorded. And then those are being used back against the town or other boards. And, and now I think that's kind of been resolved. I think we've kind of do, you know, we twist ourselves into making sure that those decisions are recorded in a way that just says, hey, if the granting authority board wants to approve this, then apply these conditions. And leave it at that, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I do think that's a good point. It did really stem from that issue of, first of all, the way it was worded, but then secondly, um, just seeing on the backend how then you have to define, what is the expertise? Like, is this a group of groundwater experts? And if it's positioned as a group of groundwater experts that are saying this when the planning board says something different, it, you know, you would tend to say, oh, well, those are the experts, and they're really not groundwater experts. Is, except, obviously Fred is a groundwater expert, but I mean, and, and they have expertise in, in important areas. But is it a team of engineers who are all groundwater engineers saying that send one thing, well, the planning board says another thing, then it doesn't, it looks, it's difficult to defend. So I think that's where we're running into, what is the perception of this board, of this committee? If it's really just five set of eyes, it's the same, you know, we're five extra set of eyes too. So what's, what five extra set of eyes get to be the, deemed the, the, the experts? And, and it's difficult for the planning board to, um, although we're the SPGA, is you, you want to be perceived as, there's really no difference in either group of five set of eyes. But there's more than, am I saying that right? Yes, there are five sets of eyes.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of eyes.
Well, I don't know if even the name of it, the Groundwater Advisory Committee has, that, that pretty much says what it is. But in some ways, it may lend itself some weight, saying, well, we're an advisory committee. We, you know, that's what we do. We advise people what to do. But then again, that can be taken, we're, we're not a planning board advisory board. We're a planning board. Could be just the, what it's called that allows it to be seemingly more, um, you know, more professional. I don't know.
And it has, it was used.
Right, exactly. A, a term that basically going against the advice of this or of, of the board was, well, even though they're advisory, that, that had a different weight to it, I felt.
Mm-hmm.
It also stacks up against the board. It's when they say, well, you know, design review approved, groundwater approved, the planning board can't deny, we've already gone through all these approvals.
Right, right.
Oh, right. That, I'm glad you brought that up, Amy. Um, that was the other thing Fred, we talked about last time, was, um, applicants getting frustrated at the end of the line when the planning board is the final stop. And they feel like, in some, not all cases, a lot of people already know the process. But we've already explained that to the advisory, the committee, and they think you're the, the advisory committee is the group that already made a decision. So why is the planning board asking us all these questions? And they're aggravated to have to come back, to come to us now and do all the same questions and all the same routine because they already did that and feel like that box was checked and approved. And now I'm just here for my, you know, final tying up the loose end. So that was a thing too, that we talked about, um, just being the end of the line and that frustration that, that we hear from. And a, a couple of applicants have brought it up recently.
Seemingly.
Well, um, the, first of all, the, I don't believe that the groundwater advisory committee ever referred to themselves as experts. And so, um, and their decisions and recommendations that I write for them are at their direction. And they're, if I didn't use the correct wording at some point in time, it was never intended to be an approval of the project. It was a recommendation. And we always try to use the word, we recommend approval with the following conditions. Um, it is the planning board's role as a special permit granting authority to make the decision. And then if an applicant is irritated that they have to explain themselves more than once, well, then, ah, so be it. And I think you've done a good job of framing it up for them, that their responsibility is to make it clear to you that their project warrants approval and that you, as the board, will be making the final decision, not the groundwater advisory committee. The groundwater advisory committee, when I work with them and they come on board, they're ma, it's made clear that their advisory, the special permit granting authority generally takes their recommendation and incorporates it into a larger decision. But it's not, you can't vary from that if there's other information or other reasoning. And then you have to provide the findings of fact on your decision that they don't have to. They just look at the proposal. I tell them where it meets the bylaw, where it doesn't meet the bylaw. They ask about what goes on inside. What else can we do to make sure that, uh, uh, a rare occurrence of a, of a spill or a catastrophic, catastrophe, catastrophic, catastrophic event, um, were to occur, what could we do to, you know, mitigate that? Or the possibility of that as much as possible, deliveries, uh, storage, containments within the building and where they are, floor drains, things like that, heating it with, uh, natural gas instead of oil, things like that. So, um, I think it's, it's just too bad for them if they are frustrated that they have to explain it, um, often or again, a second time after the committee's already looked at it. And you, like I said, you've handled them very well and it's just a cost to do in business to explain yourself more than once. Um, as long as it's not contrary, or if it is, then the board has the right to, as they have done in the past, send them back to the groundwater committee for further exploration.
Any other thoughts on this one?
Well, is there a way of wording it so that if you said the groundwater committee makes the following recommendations in support of this application or something rather than approval? Because approval is a, I think, a more determinate, uh, action. It, is that a?
Yeah, I think we switched, switched over to that. Did we switch?
Um, in the past, the wording has been, they recommend approval with the following conditions. Uh, more recently, it's been they, they recommend the following conditions, um, should you decide to approve. It's, it's a little bit semantics, but if it makes everyone feel better, I'm happy to provide the right language, uh, for everyone to be comfortable. But the groundwater committee seems okay with it. As Anthony indicated, um, they felt as though really didn't need any further discussion. They're comfortable with the wording that we used on the, the last couple of projects that came before them and then went on to you and/or the ZBA.
Right. I, I think that's, that's good language or, or better language.
Well, speaking of language then, is it just as simple as maybe taking out advisory from the, making a groundwater committee? Or groundwater review committee? I mean, it sounds so silly that it's almost, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to split hairs. But it's true, to Millie's point earlier, it does add some sort of, um, authority to it that I don't think is, that, that hurts the board in some cases, especially if we don't agree.
Well, you can, you can propose whatever you like. But I don't think, eliminating the word advisor, I think the word advisory actually clarifies that they're not making a decision, but they're just providing advice. They're not, they're not a permit granting authority.
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if you just call a groundwater committee, then somebody might think that they're actually making a decision and they're not. They're making a recommendation, so.
Can go both ways on that, I know.
Alright, thoughts on this otherwise?
Well, I think it started way back when we've started discussing this, when I was on the groundwater committee. And, you know, maybe it's changed, some members have changed. But when I started on the groundwater committee, it was when they requested that we didn't get the information to read, like the stormwater reports. And, and maybe it was just a joke, but they're like, oh, we just go on Fred's numbers and Fred information anyways. We don't want to waste paper. And it, it just triggered in my head like, well then why, if we're not reading anything or doing anything but reading Fred's memo, then why can't it just go straight to the planning board and have the planning board read Fred's memo? Because it is an extra step for the applicant. And if we do have questions and send it back to the groundwater committee, then it adds another month to the review process. Whereas if we had a question, we could just ask Fred right there at the meeting and get an answer. Whereas if we had a question, we could just ask Fred right there at the meeting and get an answer. Versus sending it back to groundwater committee. I guess that's where I started. And I do do think the new letter is better, but I do think. You know, when there are cases when it goes to court, it comes back. To, well, they're the experts and you know, more than one person has said that. And then a judge in court doesn't know, they don't know who is on the groundwater. Committee. They don't know their backgrounds, their degrees. They just hear from. The lawyer saying, well, the groundwater committee, which is a group of experts. Agreed. Didn't even attorney Dineski think that the groundwater committee was in he's. Surprised when he heard that it wasn't experts in groundwater? He even thought. He even thought.
I don't, I don't recall that, but. Again, the groundwater committee never. Impressed upon any applicants that they were experts. If that's something that the applicant's attorney presented to the board, it's it's wrong. It's not right. And. I don't know what gets said when they go to court. I do know what I say when I get deposed, but that's about it, so. I'm the technical expert, if you will, for the committee and also for the planning board. All of you don't review stormwater calculations when a site plan or subdivision comes in, because to be honest. Even I don't want to look at them some days, but that's part of my job. The groundwater committee. Doesn't also want to sort through all the MSDS sheets, which are sometimes quite extensive. To see if there's any hazard, they rely on me to do that, but then they review the recommendations. They're there to discuss. Like I said, what goes on inside the building. They're really the only border committee that gets a chance to. Delve into what's going on inside the building. And I think that. Is appropriate because you're looking at, as the board's looking at site plan issues outside, parking setbacks. Grading, is the drainage handled properly? Is it impacting the road and the traffic and all the other stuff? They are focusing on just. The impact to potential impact to the groundwater supply and what kind of safeguards it is. I think it it. It forms it up pretty nicely. And in terms of. Extending the process, the groundwater committee meets prior to the public hearing with the special permit granting authority. To try to facilitate a more expeditious process. We've always done that and it's worked pretty well. There are. That I can recall that many instances where. Somebody has to go back to the groundwater committee to get more information. It it has happened a few times in the past few years, but it's typically not been something that had to occur.
I'm trying to think of for inside the building, outside of the chemical storage and types of chemicals, is there is there other stuff inside? The building?
Laboratory space. Floor drains inside the building, where the deliveries come, loading dock stuff inside where it gets dropped off, how it gets. From the parking lot into the building. Truck washing is a frequent question. Sometimes there's a. A trucking terminal may want to supply a building for refueling and then. That kind of operation gets looked at by the committee as well. We've had some instances where people wanted to do a. Temporary or refueling like late at night, they bring in a a company that has a tanker truck and they want to fill all the trucks. In the parking lot, you know, what are the safeguards that need to be implemented for something like that, even though it's not inside the building? Because there's a much bigger potential for spill. Especially late at night and filling multiple trucks with one big tanker truck, stuff like that, so. But the operation. I don't, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, most of the companies that want to do it have a fuel island, much like what we have at the DPW. Where they have a canopy like a gas station and then the trucks pull up and they they dispense the fuel and there's a permanent. Tank for diesel fuel or gasoline, but I I don't. There was one that was looking at it, but I don't think that they're doing it up on Whitney Street.
And you don't mind the extra night of work or overseeing a committee or dealing with it, it's not like extra.
I wish you would have asked me that a long time ago, but no, I don't mind it.
I mean, I'm not looking to propose, make a proposal that like hurts your job and that you really find value in this and it's helpful to you. You don't view it as extra work and I I I personally don't see. I could see it just coming straight to us and it would make no difference really and like there would be no additional value that I. Can first that I see in my my view, but I'm not looking to make it so you all of a sudden don't have a resource that you find valuable. So you're saying here that you, this is a resource you find valuable and it helps your job. It doesn't create extra work. Or extra steps for you. It's something you really, it's instrumental, not instrumental, but it's important to your job.
Well, there, I mean, it's another meeting, but it's another set of eyes that looks at. Other stuff that goes along with the proposal and the application beyond just the stormwater reports and reviewing the MSDS sheets. And you never know, someone's going to have something to say that is familiar with that kind of business that I'm not. It's a. You may want to hear from them. You may want to hear from each of the boards and committees that has a member on the board. You you have. Two people who participated through the planning board, but there, you know, there are four other boards that have. Members on the committee now and have in the past, so they all. Come with some different experiences and expertise, so. Not experts in groundwater, but expertise in some form of education and experience.
Okay, any other board thoughts or what 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 approach do we want to, hearing Fred, what we were kind of waiting for last time? What is that? How does that resonate with board members in terms of what we talked about?
I guess I think that. I think it would be a cleaner approach. To have it just go right directly to the SPGA. Instead of having, and that would save the applicant an extra step as well. And takes a little confusion out of it from their perspective.
Other thoughts on that?
I somewhat agree with that, just streamline that. Piece of it.
I mean, I can see the streamlining piece, but you know, my concern is that Fred sees a benefit from this. Right? If Fred said, you know, there's no benefit of another set of eyes hitting, you know, these documents, then. I'm all for it, but. You know, the fact that the expert gets a benefit out of it, I think is what's causing me some pause.
Amy, what are your thoughts as a? Former groundwater member?
I know, I have said it a bunch of times, so. I don't know, I'd go back. In and watch. Other meetings I didn't. I don't know if I ever heard anything. About the septic being talked about when I was on groundwater. Except for Fred brought it forward, you know, how many bathrooms could be, but it didn't come from the board of health person. And. I don't know. Couple applicants that felt like they went through groundwater and then groundwater said yes, and then the ZBA or the planning board said no. So they didn't feel a benefit and that was just from the applicant's point of view, like if it doesn't have teeth, then what's the point?
What if? The board took a, if if between now and the next meeting, I I know everyone's time is limited, but if you're on a walk or something. Pop your headphones in and listen to a groundwater meeting, just to get a feel, especially for those of us who haven't sat on groundwater. Just to hear like what 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 the conversations sound like and what, maybe it'll just help give us a little perspective. I guess if you've been on it, you don't have to do that, but would that be okay? Is that something? I'd be willing to do that. Bill or Millie, did you ever watch them in general? Maybe you've seen them before.
I haven't, but I can definitely do that.
Do you watch some of them, Millie, or?
I don't. When when do they occur? I think I have a conflict. Which is why.
Are they recorded? I think they're recorded.
Oh, recorded.
Yeah, you could just go back in history and like.
Yeah.
Listen to a ground meeting.
At least the last couple of years.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's minutes too. You can always read the minutes.
Oh, that's true. So maybe if you haven't, so that way we're making an informed like. To be fair, not just. Rush to something, we'll figure, we'll just do a little homework and see what do those meetings sound like, maybe a couple of minutes, what are the minutes look like and. Then we'll come back next week and. And reconvene on that one.
And I think one thing that when you look at our zoning, I'm going to open it to groundwater. One thing that isn't discussed is. We talked about the the ease or remember what was that sentence? If you have like. Operations and management plan, the ease of feasibility of it. Remember?
Oh, yeah.
One plan came back. So that's something that the planning board looked at, but I don't think has ever been discussed, but maybe it. Wouldn't be something the groundwater committee would even discuss. Let me see, where is it? Just looking up. On the page. I don't even see it anymore, but remember that one statement?
Yeah, I think last year or the year before, one year, we tried to like at least put it all together because it was sort of an outlier from the rest of it. And and it was part of a bigger change. So I think by the way of the bigger change getting kicked out, that also got kicked out.
Oh, really? All right, well, I can look up what I was talking about for the next meeting.
Okay, anything else on this one? All right, I think we, that was all, I think the rest are. The rules and regs. Subdivision and then one more we talked about was the Mullins rule, so I don't. We got to figure out what to do with that one. So Laurie, you still with us? Laurie, well, I guess I think I saw.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that. What was that? Question?
We're switching over to rules and regs, so we have a couple of the rules and regs changes that I think were originally listed on our bylaw changes. And fall under either the subdivision or the rules and regs.
Yes, so if you go to the planning board rules and regs. Page number fourteen of the draft that I sent out, it on the top of it, it says amended November first, two thousand twenty-two. Do you have that?
Yes.
So it's under common driveway regulations. So one of the first changes that we wanted to make. So Fred and I worked on these together. Was to specify that the datum should be the NAV eighty-three, NAV eighty-eight datum. So that's the most recent datum. And it refers to the latitude and longitude. So that's the datum that. The GAS department in Northborough uses, so we want to make sure that we're compatible. With the. Regulation, I'm sorry, the plans that are submitted. So then under letter D. We were interested in getting more information about what's happening. At the intersection of the common driveway and the access road. So we were asking for some more information within two hundred feet of that. Subject property lot boundaries. So that would be a new addition. And then we jump to page sixteen. So letter E, we wanted to add the driveway profile. So that will show what's happening to the existing contours. So the existing topography of the land. So we'll be able to see more clearly if there's going to be a cut or a fill. So this is really important on common driveways with a steep grade. So that's something that I really felt was lacking when we went through the common driveway on Ridge Road. Thankfully, in that particular situation, it was pretty flat. But in a situation like the. The the project that we're dealing with on Crawford Street. I know that's for a single family home, but if it were a common driveway, we would absolutely like to see. How the grades were going to change and whether it was going to be a balanced site. So also proposing to add a new letter F. So that way we can see the grade of streets as they intersect the common driveway. So this is super important for fire department access. So any questions on these so far? No? Okay, so then we jump ahead to site plan regulations. On page eighteen. Under letter C, number four. We wanted, similar to the common driveway. Changes, we wanted to understand more clearly. What's going on with utilities, if there's a fire hydrant, we want to know where it's located. And certainly the drainage, should it exist? So that's within two hundred feet of the subject property. And once again, we wanted to specify that we want the NGBD datum. I think that might be a typo, shouldn't it be N A B D? Fred? Up here, I'm on mute.
Nope, NGVD is the correct one. That's the National Geodetic Vertical Datum.
Okay, I'll change it on page fourteen then, so it's consistent.
Well, the page fourteen was. N A D eighty-three is a horizontal datum. N A V D is a vertical datum.
Okay, so this is something completely different is the NGBD?
NGVD is the vertical datum of nineteen eighty-eight. And N A V D is the horizontal datum of nineteen eighty-three. Both of you, both of those are the datums. That are associated with the town's GIS system so that any plans would be consistent with the town's raw data. So I believe that they're both correct. On page fourteen and page eighteen.
All right, Fred, I'm going to turn it over to you to go over the change to number seventeen on page nineteen.
Okay. Thanks. The. Land clearing permit. And the land disturbance and stormwater permit are two different permits. The land clearing permit, we had established a. Number of years ago, maybe six or eight, I forget what year it was adopted in the in the. Zoning bylaw. It was to get applicants to eliminate the ability for them to just clear cut some land and start bringing fill in or taking dirt out. Without having any site plan approval or any other kind of building permit. And it's triggered whenever someone's doing work on a project that. Doesn't have a conservation commission approval or an earthwork permit. For instance, we applied it on Pleasant Street when a developer was doing a couple of single family homes, but. Because he had a couple of lots that were together disturbed more than twenty thousand square feet, he was required to get that permit. The land disturbance permit that the conservation commission now administers happens to. Projects that develop more than forty thousand square feet or more than one acre, I'm sorry. And so now we're seeing applicants trying to get under one threshold, but over another. And then the regulations for the stormwater, although I believe. And then the regulations for the stormwater, although I believe that they're clear in the regulations, both of them. Our consultant who helped us draft the land disturbance and stormwater permit thinks it's clear. I would like to make it more clear to the applicants and their engineer, in particular, the case that we had on three seventeen Crawford Street where the applicant asked for the waiver because he disagreed with my assumption that he needed to provide stormwater plan for his site, even though he was over twenty thousand square feet and under one acre. Because we refer to the Mass TP DEP Stormwater Handbook. And in there, there's an exemption for less than, projects with less than four single family homes. What I had told him was that the regulations all still apply, but the exemption does not. So what we're trying to do in number seventeen is to add that language to make it even more clear that the exemption for single family houses of less than, projects with less than four lots are not exempt and that they still have to meet all the stormwater requirements. And hopefully that will eliminate people from trying to get just under the one acre of disturbance and altering their plans. For instance, the plan on Crawford Street, I think actually would be a better project if the land disturbance area was expanded to build some smaller walls, terrace the grading in behind the house and it's disturbed more than one acre, but just, and still provide a stormwater management plan. I think that would be a better project overall, but because they tried to squeeze it down to get under the one acre of disturbance, I think they were a little hasty and they, they showed very steep slopes that realistically, a homeowner is not going to want to or be able to mow and maintain properly. I think that this language is important to establish that there's no exemption. So if that's too wordy, I apologize. If there's any questions, I can answer them. I could try.
Any questions for Fred? Okay, moving right along, page twenty. A couple of things I wanted to add that were, I felt were lacking from the regulations as they stand today is I wanted folks to submit the information about signage as part of the site plan review package. So I'm asking for the location dimensions and construction materials as well as lighting of any signage and the location and screening of refuse containers. Twenty-one. Location of all existing and proposed onsite snow storage areas. And then under development impact analysis, traffic impact, I wanted to add that they must supply accident data. And I wanted to specify that the data can be no older than twelve months old. So that way we can better ensure that we actually get current data instead of data from, you know, three, three years ago that may not be applicable today. Any questions on those? Okay, then we're gonna jump all the way ahead to page twenty-seven. And this is another Fred. Fred one.
It's really the same thing that we just talked about. It just falls under a different category. It's a matter of making it more clear that the exemptions in the Mass DEP handbook don't apply to the projects that the town requires permit for. So it's really, I believe it's all the same language that she's put in on the previous one that we talked about.
So if you folks are okay with these modifications, I would like to schedule a public hearing. So that's, that's the way of it. In order to modify the planning board rules and regs, we would be required to hold a public hearing. And then after the public hearing is closed, you can vote on whether you want to adopt the modifications or not. So these changes do not have to go to town meeting. These are your regulations, so the modification process is much simpler than it is for zoning bylaws and municipal codes. So that's good news for us.
So, oh, Freddie or something?
I do have one other thing, and I apologize to Lori because it's a bit of a surprise. Late this afternoon, in preparation for the meeting, I was speaking to the DPW director about something else, and he asked me to talk to Lori and the board about creating fifty-three G account to be used for construction site overview. It's something that I plan to bring up with the subdivision rules and regulations, which is going to be a topic of another meeting. But it is also applicable to the common driveway because we would like to get someone to, to do that construction oversight from a third party for common driveways as well as subdivisions. And, or, or not, if the board's not inclined to do that, but I know that Lori's familiar with it from the town that she came with before, and she, I believe we talked about it in the past, she was in favor of it. So if it's something that you would also consider applying to common driveways, it might go in here in the rules and regulations, but certainly it is something we'd like to have you add to the subdivision rules and regulations so that we can get some third party oversight because I just don't have time and the DPW doesn't have the staff with the right expertise.
We do actually, if you look on page twenty-eight, there is language about inspection fees. And right above, under section twelve point two procedures, it talks about Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G. So I think we're all set already, and I'm pretty sure it's already in the subdivision rules and regs, but I can double check that.
Okay, well, I guess his goal then, and having me bring it up is to ask you to utilize that and to implement that process so that applicants know going forward. And we haven't done that in the past. We haven't had a lot of subdivision construction, and we haven't had a lot of common driveways. But it is something that you probably want to look at to the future.
Yes, when we get to the fee schedule, I would like to put in the fee schedule what the technical review fee will be. And then we can require that upfront. So in the case of certain projects that are very, very large that are going to be kind of above and beyond what Fred and the DPW director can handle, we could assess those fees right upfront. So, but we'll, we'll hold that discussion until we get to the fee schedule. Michelle's been diligently working on an analysis of our fee schedule compared to similarly sized communities within the region. So we should have that ready to discuss within the next few weeks, anyway.
So is that page thirty or is that a separate schedule?
Yeah, so that's the fee schedule that's on page thirty.
Yeah, so do we need to have that wrapped up before the public hearing?
It's still a lot of work. We could do a separate public hearing just on the fee schedule. Or we could, we could wait. I, we're just definitely not ready to, to bring forward the fee schedule at this point. Because right now she's working on that analysis and it's, it's a bit, it's kind of like Amy's experience where you're not really comparing apples to apples. So it's not as simple as it may originally appear to do this giant chart. So it, it's a little bit of a struggle, but we'll get there, but we definitely need more time. So personally, I'd be okay with doing two separate public hearings just so that we can get these modifications adopted sooner rather than later. But if you don't want to go that way, certainly I, I defer to you folks.
I don't think that matters to me necessarily. I'll ask the rest of the board as well, but one other item that I would want to for board consideration is, we talked about it before, and I can swear Kathy was supposed to add it, of submission timeline. So we talked about what's the right amount of time that the board needs to receive materials before your hearing. So understanding that we need to open hearings within certain amount of time, you know, you have, you'll get on the agenda, but you may not get your to present if you're sending materials to the board, you know, that day or two days before. Remember, board members, we talked about this. We decided, like, I don't remember what we decided for the time period. It was like the Friday before or something like that. I don't see it in here. Did you happen to see it, Lori or Fred, when you were going through here?
Well, we have a, we have a, a chart that's, that's actually on our website that Michelle prepares. So it has to do with the submission deadline prior to a public hearing. So that is for the initial submission. So it says, you know, if you want to be on the November first agenda, you have to submit by, say, you know, October tenth.
Right, but then like, we'll still get groundwater reports, you know, right that same day, or poor Fred scrambling to put a letter back to that, their updates to get to the board that same day. And it was just unfair for staff and the board to be reviewing materials the afternoon of a hearing. So even if that initial timeline satisfies their right to get a hearing, we were trying to make sure, like, if you don't have it all in by X period of time, then Fred, you weighed in on how much time you wanted to review, and Laura, you probably need time too, so.
What I've been telling people is that I want stuff by noon on Tuesday, the week before the planning board meeting. So when I'm speaking to people on the phone, that's the deadline that I'm giving them. Now, does that happen? Sometimes.
I, I would agree. I think the issue is revised plans, revised calculations, supplemental reports, traffic and things that may not have been submitted when the public hearing prior to the public hearing being opened. That's on us to relay to the applicants and their consultants that a week before is kind of the customary amount, gives us the discretion to allow a little more time if it's a minor thing versus a significant thing. And off the record, the applicants and their consultants are made aware that should they present information the day of or the day before a planning board meeting, they run the risk of staff saying, we, we don't recommend that you close a hearing or that we don't recommend that you approve the project because we haven't had time to review this, and then the discussion goes from there. Most applicants are agreeable to meeting that one week prior deadline or submitting a request for an extension or continuance. And so gives us a little flexibility. Again, when it's a smaller issue, that's not terribly complicated, we can look at it quickly on Friday and still have a, a letter for you on Tuesday. And sometimes even a week before is not enough time given other things that may be going on in the office or the town hall. So it's hard to say a week is the always going to be enough time, but it's what we've used as kind of a guideline for everyone who comes to the office with revised plans and reports.
Okay, so then on the flip side, as the, someone who then has to review it from there, I would want to get everything by the Friday before that Tuesday meeting because it's hard, like, especially if you work a full-time job during the day, to be able to read that. And in fairness to the applicant, like, take the time to really read it, not just skim it quickly before the hearing. So is there a way to make sure that, and I don't know, board members, feel free, I think it's been a issue in the past, and not so much actually this past year, I suppose, but is, was there a time that we would want it by, at our, on our desk by, or?
Yeah, I think in the past, we wanted it before the weekend. But it has been better this year.
Well, what, what we could do, if, if Lori's agreeable, we could take that one week prior timeframe that we're relaying to them verbally and move it out to, you know, ten days or twelve days before, so that staff has time to review it and get it to you. Because if we leave it at a week, the Tuesday before, then quite often we're reviewing it on Friday or Monday sometimes to get you a letter just in time for the meeting. And I can appreciate that that's not fair for all of you who work, you know, full-time jobs. So perhaps we, you know, we can pull our heads together and come up with a timeframe that's agreeable for them to get it to us and then us to get it to you. It needs to be in the rules and regulations.
Okay, that's what I was just gonna ask. Does that need to be in the rules and regs or no?
I don't think so. And it can also be, you know, we can revisit it. I, I am used to a Friday deadline. So I've had a Friday deadline for myself and you know, other staff for many, many years. So that's not something that I am concerned about. As long as I'm able to get the materials and then have the time to review it, I, I think that Friday is absolutely reasonable for you to expect deliverables from Fred and I. So and then Fred and I can talk about whether, you know, I think it really depends on the project. Like, I know for me, if it's if it's a small project and it's a revision, and I get it the Tuesday before, might only take me two hours to review it. And then I could get you a letter. If it's a more complicated project, like, you know, the common driveway project was more complicated, I might need more turnaround time. And it also depends on, you know, how many reviews in, how, how many different versions have we already seen? So I, I think I would appreciate the ability to have some flexibility to discuss with the applicant and, you know, put it in context as to the size of the project. And you know, the, the number of moving parts, how many revisions we've had. Because I do anticipate if it were twenty lot subdivision, I might need a week and a half. If it's a tiny project like a duplex, I might only need, you know, the Tuesday before.
Okay.
It also, it also sometimes depends on how the engineer submits his revision. If he just sends us another, a whole set of plans and a stormwater report without an outline of what he's done to make the changes to meet our previous letter, then we're starting from scratch. We've, we've tried to explain to applicants that it's in their best interest to address the letters that we've written and how they've made corrections or revisions or what they couldn't address, so that we can focus our review on just what's changed, not having to review the entire project all over again. So again, it's, a lot of times it's a case by case basis and some engineers and applicants are more willing to accommodate that than others.
Okay, so it sounds like either way, we don't need it in the rules and regs. Any board member thoughts otherwise, or does that sound all right?
I think that sounds reasonable, for sure.
Okay, so is this something, do we have any other changes?
I'm actually taking a class Thursday night. And it is, I went back and checked, Lori, and it's on, it's on this. Planning Board Rules and Reg. So I was hoping we could have one more meeting before the hearing, just in case I hear something. You know, I'm sure these look pretty detailed. I'm sure we have everything covered. But maybe there's something they mentioned in class, like, oh, you want to have this or that. But it's Thursday night. It's one of those CPTC classes. And I can even share the materials with everybody. So does it matter if we don't have the hearing until December? We have one more meeting in between?
Do we have a, a deadline with which we have to submit changes to the planning board rules and regulations?
Um, you know, my desire to, to get these adopted, you know, then later has to do with the applications submitted that we expect in the near future. But I don't, I don't really see any problem with delaying two weeks. Our next meeting is on November fifteenth, so you know, that, I think that's fine. What do you think, Fred?
I think it's fine. I'm actually not going to be in town for the next meeting. And I think that Um I think it's fine. I'm actually not gonna be um in town for the next meeting, and I think that um did we talk about it? Don't we, didn't we think we needed two weeks to advertise anyway, so it's not like you could get on the next agenda with the public hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, so can we just book the public hearing for December either way, and we have that interim?
Uh yes, except that I believe Lori wanted to put the actual wording that we're gonna discuss at the public hearing in the legal ad, so we need to have it pretty well firmed up when the ad goes in.
Um maybe the best thing to do, Amy, is if you, if you go to the meeting on um on Thursday, if you could submit any changes that you think would be good to me by Monday, and then, so there's a lag time before, between when I put the public hearing notice in uh submitted to the newspaper to when we actually, it will actually appear in the newspaper. Um so you can just submit those to me, I'll just add them to the list, and then during the public hearing process, uh they'll be vetted, and we can either modify or, you know, um not go forward with it, or accept it the way that you propose it. Um so just because it's advertised, it's included in this uh proposed changes, doesn't mean we have to go forward with those changes, so if you can send those.
We could always send them change it with the table too, like, oh, you could do that. Yep, I'll try, I'll do that, but also, like, if we, if we didn't wanna do it any changes, and I heard something at the meeting, then um we could add it when you do the, update the fee table. I could always do those changes then too.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm sure there isn't anything new in the class, so yeah, we could do it later on, once we do the fee table. If we don't wanna take a chance, I don't wanna screw up the public hearing.
So when would the public hearing be? Not the fifteenth, it would be December?
December sixth.
Okay, it's, um I guess we were getting to this in the agenda at some point anyway. What do we want to do for December? Can we get away with one December meeting, or do we have too much going on where we need to, because we'd be looking at the twentieth for our other one?
Uh so far, the only um application that we have is the three-seventeen Crawford. Uh so that public hearing was continued to December sixth, as you know. So we would have this rules and regs public hearing and that public hearing, and then I don't have anything else.
So, so is it feasible, we only meet once in December, or?
I think so.
How do board members feel about that?
I, I think it's fine.
Did you mean to smile that big when I said that? All right, so right now, our goal is only one, so if we make it the sixth, that, that would work. Um okay, so getting back to the, the main question then, are there any comments to what's on the table right now? The edits that um Lori and Fred have proposed here. Any questions or comments?
Think they look good.
I agree. I have one comment. Carrie, it actually could free up your schedule a little bit. Um looking at the calendar in December, um the groundwater committee is typically meets on the second Tuesday, but because um you won't be meeting after that, and the Z B A's not meeting in December, there won't be a December groundwater advisory committee, so that meeting night would be available if you wanted to use the thirteenth instead of the sixth, if that makes it more comfortable for scheduling.
I'm not sure, cuz we just continued through seventeen to the
Oh, that's true. Well, I'm not proposing a second meeting for you then.
Okay, does that make sense then to still meet the sixth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, okay. So it looks like no comments or questions on this. Thank you for going through. This must have been a lot of work. This is a huge document that I don't think we've looked at that closely in a long time, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh okay, if, do we need to look at subdivision tonight, or is that another night?
No, we haven't even started that one yet, so that'll be another big activity for Fred and I.
Okay, and that's the common driveway, things like that, the nineteen sixty-seven reference is that one, okay.
Yeah, that's gonna take a little while.
Yeah, that one might be a best reserve for the spring.
Okay, all right, then let's see, rules and regs, zoning, anything for master plan? Do we need to do any sort of voting on what's come before? Is there any vote on what's happened with the rules and regs, or we're just going straight to public hearing?
We'll just go straight to the public hearing, and then you vote on those after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, anything for master plan implementation?
No, we have our meeting next Thursday, uh so it'll be another meeting, actually, is it next Thursday? It might be two weeks from now, two Thursdays from now. Um so we will be meeting with the consultant again, uh Weston and Sampson, and updating on um their, their work over the last month.
Right, we have an A and R tonight for forty-one, forty-three Hudson Street, forty-seven Hudson Street. Did you send that over?
Yes, uh you should have received that um via email, and I believe it was uploaded onto the website. So it's a lot line change.
Oh, no, I don't see it. No, that's from April, so this is a new, this is, they've done an A and R in the past, back in April.
Okay, let me um, let me go onto the website, see if I can find it.
Wait, you said eighty-seven Hudson Street, right?
No.
It's a forty-one dash forty-three Hudson Street and forty-seven Hudson.
Oh, forty-seven, yep, okay, completely wrong numbers.
Do you have it?
No, that's okay, I'll just go to the website.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see anything. Or if you have it there and wanna bring it up, or?
I am also uh looking for it, so just bear with me a minute. Uh here we are. All right, so uh I'm gonna try and share my screen. Do you see that? Mm-hmm. All right, so what they're proposing to do, so this is the large parcel. Uh so this is um forty-one or forty-three Hudson Street, and this is forty-seven Hudson Street, this is a single-family home. Uh so unfortunately, they put their swimming pool uh back too far on their budding neighbor's uh property. So they are interested in acquiring this piece of land uh from their butter and making their parcel bigger. So it's a simple lot line change, uh it looked good. I didn't see any issues. I know uh Fred reviewed it as well, and I don't believe he saw any issues either.
Okay, any board questions on this one? Okay, is there a motion then to approve the A and R for forty-one, forty-three Hudson Street, forty-seven Hudson Street?
Moved.
Second. All in favor of Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so um I can come in and sign that. So do we actually have to approve an A and R, even though approval's not required?
Yeah, so the way the way it works is you do have to uh vote on it, um but you can't require any conditions as part of the approval, and there's no public hearing. So that's why they call it approval not required, so it's a real simple uh approval process, and they're really limited as to what you could ask for as well.
Just always thought that was odd.
Okay, any um subcommittee updates?
Not for me.
So Open Spaces met this week, um we, they brought up the um, the senior center trail, um and they're moving forward on that. Um the Aqueduct Bridge, as well as the multi-use trail, um they want to use some CPC funds for um trying to get that multi, multi-use trail project um from one, from West Road to, through to Berlin, um to get a feasibility study completed.
Yes, uh so actually, I submitted two CPC applications today. Um so one was for that senior ADA trail, and the other one was for the dog park, so that's another open space project that's uh going ahead.
Great. Any other subcommittee updates?
Busy year, a lot of them.
Okay, next, um busy baby is the twenty-second, anything exciting there this month?
Um so the project that you folks uh submitted a, a letter on, so that's eighty Main Street, uh was continued to the November twenty-second meeting. So there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of discussion on that one. Um and they didn't feel ready to render a decision, they wanted to uh ponder it a bit more. Um so that is uh going ahead on the twenty-second, and then we received another uh variance application, um that one has to do with um building too close to the side setback, so they installed an above-ground pool as well as a deck. Um so two issues, one is that they're in the drainage easement, and then the other one is the side setback.
Okay, uh our next board meeting is the fifteenth, and then as we just talked about, we have the sixth, and likely that's our only December meeting.
So we have anything on the fifteenth of November?
All our bylaws, we have to do.
Yep.
What do you, oh, you mean applications, you mean hearings?
Or just anything else other than the bylaw?
No, nothing.
So hopefully we can wrap that up. All right, great, any, if there's no other business for the board, is there a motion or adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony? One more time.
You're mute.
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Have a great night, Fred, have a good vacation.